I have the application. I'll help you go about it.
You can go for it.
Call and make the order. And we have everyone present except Janelle.
No, Janelle is present by phone.
She's here in spirit.
Did you hear that, Janelle?
Yeah, I heard that.
I didn't say spirits. Okay, need to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Justin, second by Cindy. All vote in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Approve or disapprove the consent agenda.
In your list of bills, Jane brought me one tonight for historical committee, past perfect software, in the amount of $276. Otherwise, what's in front of you is current. Total bills then are $20,931.56.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, motion by Jane, second by Randy. All vote in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That includes the claims and payroll and all that, the two dozen tax.
Yes.
Okay. Public hearing on the budget amendment.
Nancy, can you give us some background on why and the wherewithal for that?
I can. We planned a lot of projects for this budget year, and we didn't have as good of, well, we really didn't have any cost estimates because they really weren't on our radar when we planned this budget. And Iowa law states that, and you already know, by program or by fund, you cannot spend more than you budgeted for, you told your citizens you were going to spend. And those projects have caused us to be able to look like we're in a position to be overbudgeted at the end of the year. Iowa law also states that you have until May 31st to amend your budget. So I've taken the best estimate I can. And basically, most of this is because we have to make some payments out of the water fund and the sewer fund to the electric fund, and those are called transfers. And it's that transfer number that's the biggest problem. And then, the other expense on there was some of the costs of the power line upgrade that we did. And I had a little note here somewhere.
Yeah, how much was that total?
We have, you're gonna find this is really interesting because we have done a lot of work in the last year in our power system. You'll remember, we had to buy a new transformer. That was approximately $15,000 by the time we got that installed. We did the meter replacement program. Most of that was in last year's budget year, but there was 1,500 of that in this year. We purchased a spare meter in case the other one goes out. That was $10,625. The line extension to Moores for the...
Excuse me, you mean a transformer?
What'd they say?
Meter.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's a...
I wrote spare meter on my list.
I knew what she meant, but I thought I better correct it.
Thank you. Yeah, I even wrote spare meter on my scratch paper here, so, anyway. The total cost for the build at Moores was $25,750, but you'll remember, he wrote us a check for just under $10,000 of that, for his share of that, that we will...
Will you give us the exact amount that he wrote the check for? Just like...
Yeah, just one second.
Just so I have the figures. Is his basic deposit?
That is his basic deposit, yes. And that is half the cost of that underground line. And we are, as you remember, we are refunding that back to him in the amount of $152.31 a month. And then, the new power line upgrades that we did, including poles, connectors, crossarms, you name it, it's all new out there, was $55,944.38. So we spent, in fiscal year '14, we've spent $93,819.59.
One more time, $93,000?
In calendar year, from about this time last year until now, we've actually spent $106,800. So we've spent a lot of money on our electrical system, and we are in a much better position than we were a year ago. And I did check today, just as a matter of information, I did check. Alan Bonderman, who's going to help us with our continuing plan, he told us that the last time he was on the phone, he was gonna have to have some surgery, and it turned out to be very major surgery. But he's doing very well and recuperating, so I don't think it'll be very long, and he'll be back to work on our project, so...
Nancy, I'm sorry, but I didn't touch the total for the upgrade overall, the electrical upgrade.
For the year?
For the calendar year, it's $106,800.
Thank you.
That was basically the difference between the meters and basically the meter upgrade?
Yeah, yeah. Some of those dollars were meters that we paid for in the other fiscal year. And the best part of that is, we got all that done, guys, without taking any money out of our reserves. But we budgeted for $330,000 in work for this year, and we're at $333,000 tonight, so we have to amend the budget to cover that.
Is that the only budget amendment?
I did put some revenue in there, so it didn't look quite so bad. In the water fund, I put some, about $17,000 in additional revenue that looks very realistic due to the new meters for this year. I really can't wait until we have two years of data on that, but that is working out very well. I would say, on a general basis, our revenue in the water fund is up about 18%. So...
That's the meters, huh?
Yes. Well, and the time savings in the processes for getting the billing done and the meters read, if we were to calculate that into this kind of savings, it's... Yeah, yeah.
Significant.
And it is so simple now to do it. And we did find some meters this month that weren't working, that had to be replaced for whatever reason. So...
A big important one.
Yeah, a big important one. Yeah, exactly, so...
Which one?
Moores.
He uses most water.
Really?
Yeah, his, just for whatever reason, when we turned him back on to run for the winter, it didn't read anything. But it's repaired now, isn't it?
No.
No?
Nope. He's got parts right.
You didn't work in the rain?
No.
Okay. It will get repaired as soon as he can.
I went and checked on it. My phone, I'm in the shop over there. Yeah.
We need it.
Let it go.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget.
If you would, make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by Cindy, second by Justin. Reproach the public hearing. All vote in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
I've got approving that amendment a little farther down in the agenda, Cindy.
Okay, now we get on with the approve, public works summer projects. One of them is the gravel in the alleys. Or alleys, Cindy.
They're looking at you.
They're looking at me? Okay. Jerry is, I don't know where he gets his information, but he's always right, so we don't argue with him. The estimate is, to put three inches of gravel down on our alleys, it takes about 30 ton per alley. Our alleys are 300 feet long, and we have 14 of them. And so, I think I told you that if we put, and this is delivered, and you will notice that there are prices on this sheet from Halletts and from Moores. Halletts for one inch, road gravel is $16.70. Moores delivered, and that is spread in the alleys, is $14 a ton. And I had all this worked out, I don't know where I wrote it down, but 30 times 14...
420.
Is 420 times 14, no.
You had it in the notes.
Yeah, I did, and now I don't have it in front of me, so... Oh, no, the road gravel is $10.50. I'm sorry. It's $4,410 in that approach. Now, there may be some alleys that take a little more, there may be some alleys that'll take a little less, but I think from driving around, they all need some, and it's... And I had, when we started talking about this, put a budget number of 5,000. You know, we authorized $10,000 to do street work, and thought we would spend 15 total in this budget year, and so, the other part of that is doable under this, under these prices. The other thing, what was I gonna say? Oh, we will need, we will need to borrow, steal, rent, some kind of a box scraper to level it just a little more after he spreads it. He'll spread it as good as he can, but it'll need a little help.
And I mentioned to Nancy that Jim Rins is willing to either do the work or lend a box scraper, whatever works out better for you, Jerry. So...
That's an action item?
At least we can do. Well, let's decide. Moores are obviously cheaper, and they're local customers, so we got it.
We're supposed to know.
Yeah. It's one-inch road gravel, is that what they call it?
No, it's just road gravel. It's gotta go down.
Road gravel's not higher.
Yeah, $10.50.
And this one?
Oh, it is $9.10.
Not delivered.
Yeah, delivery is on top of the Halletts' prices.
What is it per ton delivered, did they say?
Halletts.
I didn't ask him on that, because it's be the same, if not more.
Yeah, we can't even haul it for $1.40 a ton.
If Halletts don't do it, I'd have to get somebody to do it anyhow. I mean, somebody with trucks.
And that, and Moores are willing to spread it as well, right? Where Halletts may be just dumping it somewhere.
Halletts won't even do it. I'd have to find somebody with a truck. Halletts don't have trucks to do it.
Okay. Are they just using the gravel trucks with the...
No.
Valley dumps, okay.
So you have to worry about the wires.
Then we don't need to be concerned about, one-inch road gravel is one-inch road gravel, right? I mean, there's not different qualities of...
You want this one down here? You want the one down up here?
Yeah, and I started that, I confused you, Jane, that was my fault.
Well, do you... Janelle?
Yeah, I'm confused.
Okay.
Okay, how much is it? Can you just give us the price, Nancy, like how much it would cost per alley if we lay the one inch?
For the road gravel, at $10.50 a ton, it costs $315 per alley, at three inches.
At three inches?
Yep.
Okay, and then, 315 times 16?
Is $4,410.
And that will come out of our road use?
Road use tax, and how much do we have in that fund?
Maybe didn't print a copy for me, you guys all have one. $27,000 something.
How much is in that fund?
$27,262.79.
Oh, so we have plenty of money to do all the alleys?
Yes.
So I think we need to go ahead and get them all done.
I'll make a motion that we approve Moores' bid for alley gravel, delivered and spread.
That's just the $4,410?
Mm-hmm, yeah. I'll second it.
Motion by Jane, second by Cindy to approve the Moores' bid, that $4,410 total. Any further discussion on the motion? All vote in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, approve the cost of tree removal, that one's in East Second Street. Kind of a dangerous situation.
Well, I can't figure out who owns the property, in all honesty.
It's really a hazard.
I spent an hour, I spent an hour today and even called the courthouse. Janine Hale is the person on the deed, but she had led me to believe that she owed a mortgage and let the property go back to the mortgage company, and I can't find it yet. And I was hoping to have a call back from the courthouse, but I don't. Because it's a dangerous tree, I know it's on the private part of the property, but if you go up there and look at it, I can stick my fist in the cracks and the splits all the way up and down. And it may not be standing up tomorrow morning.
What's the cost to the city? What, or you're gonna give us the bids?
I'll give you the bids, yes. But, and, you know, the only recourse we really have is to assess it to the taxes after we pay the bill. You know, the taxes have not been paid for two years, and the assessments are growing, but we maybe can get it back that way, if something should ever happen. It's kinda weird, because normally, if it's been foreclosed on, the mortgage company at least pays the taxes on it. But it is, I think, gonna be on tax sale in June, so maybe we wanna think about that too. I don't know. But I gotta find out if there's a mortgage on it, because we don't want it if there's a mortgage on it.
Right.
So... And I can't answer that today.
And that's strange, it wouldn't be out there if there was. I mean, you couldn't see it.
Exactly, and Janine told me which, it was Bank of America, and I've been all over their website, I've been all over the government mortgage websites. I even, the gal at the courthouse was gonna go down to the recorder's office and see if there was ever a mortgage recorded. And she didn't call me back today, so we may have to get somebody to do a title opinion before we would take any more steps towards obtaining that property. But you sure don't wanna take on her mortgage. Do you want the bids?
Yeah.
Okay. I called Goody Tree Service, and his bid is a range between $1,800 and $2,000, depending on the time it would take. Ron Alsba is back in the business as lumberjack, and he submitted his bid, and it is $1,790. And Jane brought in a bid from Snyder's, he got up here this afternoon, and I did visit with him, and I'm opening that one right now. Snyder did?
No, I bought it Saturday night, said it wasn't doing the pre-take, it's gonna work for postal.
Okay.
Saturday night, so...
And Mr. Snyder must want the job, because his bid is $800.
I know he wants to try to get the city's business, so...
Removal of large hackberry tree at Second and Elm without stump removal, and I did tell him that. Now, what he and I did not discuss, and I don't know if you discussed with him, but that really big stuff doesn't go down here anymore.
He knows that, because he did Guyer's.
Okay, all right. Good, then I won't have to worry about that.
Have we talked to Jerry Evans at all about accepting?
Haven't needed to yet, but if we need to take something out there, I will. And I think that there could be a home for the wood if we wanted to allow that. So those are your prices, $1,800 to $2,000, $1,790 or $800. Is that your motion?
I make a motion to accept Snyder's bid of $800.
Motion by Justin to that, second by Randy. Any further discussion on the bids?
No, not the bids, but I got a discussion. Now, is he gonna trim, if he was a city visitor, is he gonna trim electric lines?
Well, I'm just saying that here's an example of where he wants to, if you look favorably on him, if there's another tree to come down. He really doesn't wanna do high-line work. I said that in a more generic sense. I'm not saying that he would do high-line work, but he definitely would like to be working for the city. He used to, and then...
But they used to do high-line wires too, so we gotta get two different contractors, which I'd say we should go with Snyder's, but I gotta find somebody else to trim high-line wires?
Well, let me talk to him. But let's have that discussion out in the open. I mean, you know, he was under the impression, and obviously, that isn't the way it's been done in the past, but he was under the impression, if the limb actually touched the high line, that that was an issue. That he, his insurance and his certification didn't allow for him to do work on high-line wires. That's what he told me. And, you know, he's a pretty straight arrow. He's... So if he feels that way, I mean, that's a whole...
It's his business.
Yeah, yeah. He's saying, but I'll take this tree down for $800, so...
Motion on the table.
When you take the tree down, what is involved? We're moving it from the property, then?
Mm-hmm. They're gonna leave the stump. We're not gonna pay to have stump ground on private property.
That will fall in her way, anyway.
Yeah, yeah. Or Snyder, Bob parked right under it today, and I parked down the street and walked. And he looks, and he says, "That's kinda bad." I says, "You noticed where I parked, right?" So you do have a motion on the table.
Okay, with the discussion on the possibly detrimental work, do we wanna proceed with this motion, or...
Yes, we don't have a choice. That's another issue.
Well, that's what I'm asking you. You wanna bring that issue in here and postpone it?
No. No, stick with the motion.
Okay, any further discussion on this motion? All vote in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Are you gonna call him, or do you want me to call him?
You call him, you're the official.
All right. I will do that, probably, yes, tonight.
If you don't mind, Nancy.
No, I don't mind. You're right, that's my job.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the fire station's rules policy. We have a copy before us. Looks like it has been edited. Okay, up for discussion. I should probably let the fire people know that they will not be able to hold on the issue when it comes up for hold, because of the conflicts of interest.
I just wanna make a couple of comments. Would the fire department, and I mean the collective group, be willing to consider a few word changes?
No. I talked to him tonight. As he wrote it, it's what it is.
Okay, well, for example, how about this? Building may be used for non-fire operations purposes with the permission of the city and in consultation with the chief.
So that's what it is. You have to ask him first, but he says, "No, no."
Could we make some slight revisions and take it back to the group?
Well, just tell everybody, told me tonight, he called me tonight, he said, "This is what it is."
This is what Randy said, okay.
With it being a city-owned building, shouldn't the city have something else?
That's the rub.
And you have to argue with trustees about it.
Why are the trustees involved in it?
Because they own the trucks. And it's set up in their policy, and they don't, you park outside for stuff.
Well, I understand that, but I'm still saying that I don't think the city should be completely taken out of it, with it being a city-owned building.
So what are you saying, the city wants to do it?
I'm just saying that we should go back to Randy Booth with Jane's suggestion.
Well, you can do that. I'm just telling everybody, told me tonight.
And that's fair. How about if we make a few suggestions? It's more an inclusion thing, that you include the city, and because technically and absolutely, legally, the building is the city's. And I don't wanna scratch that gap, okay? But if we include with the permission of the chief, or with the permission of the city and consultation with the chief, then...
You can do it every once in a while, I just, I'll give him what he wants, but I'm just telling him what he said. I can't change what he said, I have his name.
No, no, I agree, I agree. Did you fall down? Oh, oh, I can't hear it. How about this? I know you're just gonna...
I'm not saying a word. You can give him any one.
Could, as a representative of the city council, would you allow me to sit down with Randy Booth and see if we could work out just a few language changes, and then take that, I don't even say, call it a revision, but take that and...
Can just go across the floor.
Back to the group. Because it's really...
It does that once in a while, it'll quit.
It's more of an issue of the words than it is of the actual, real operating procedure. You know what I mean? It's just including, acknowledging that the city plays a part, and including that in the language. That's what I would like to do, if possible.
You want to do whatever you want. I don't know, say his arm, he's the boss, so...
I know.
I'm just telling you what I was telling you.
Did you guys make this up as a group, or did he just sit down and...
No, we did it as a group, at the last meeting.
Well, that's what I wondered, if you did as a group, or...
So we did it at the last meeting. Don't forget the meeting ones, you know?
He kicked me out of the last one, and I come to this one, and with a few...
You were on the agenda.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, we have a lot of work on that night.
No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, you can come, talk to Randy, he's... I can't change without asking.
What prompted the change, can I ask?
It was just brought up in front of them, and brought up between everybody, and that's what was decided.
How many years ago was this made up?
Oh, what did I tell you, 2000?
From the fire station, was it?
No, it was more like 2010.
It was a clarification, wasn't it, kind of?
It was basically when there was issues with people using the meter, and it was when this came.
Yeah, yeah. And that's when this kinda came up, and then when we went to move the old folks down there, it was like, well, we better get it straightened out, and...
Well, I feel really strong by the fact that with it being a city-owned building, you can't take the city council out of it.
I have to feel the same way. I hate to.
I mean, I don't have a problem with running everything past Randy, but I also feel like it needs to be ran past the city also because of us owning the building and paying for the insurance and, and everything on the building. So I think we need to present it back or send it back to the fire department and explaining our reasons why. And go from there.
Okay, Jane, you said you'd be wanting to go meet with the fire department on this?
Yes, I will.
Should the council have any problem with that?
Is that okay with you, Janelle, if Jane meets with the fire department?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, then now we're gonna table that one then, right?
Table it, or what do you want?
That's fine. Are you gonna address anything beyond the first sentence?
Yes.
I mean, as a group, are you gonna discuss anything beyond the first sentence?
Yes.
Or are you gonna go down, down, down there and discuss it with them and then come back to the council?
Yes.
Okay, you told me yes for both things. Okay, okay, alright. Then, then we'll just table it for tonight.
Okay, then the statement number two, we should accept it with trustees.
No, we're, I'm...
You're gonna take care of the whole.
Yeah, we're gonna work on the language for the whole thing.
Oh, okay, fine.
Then bring it back.
Good.
So that...
Alright.
We move on from here.
Alright. Resolution adopting budget amendments. I said, "What is that?"
No, you had public hearings. Now you're adopting resolution fourteen oh seven.
Okay.
Now we can approve it.
I make a motion to approve budget amendment number...
Fourteen oh seven.
Fourteen oh seven.
Okay, motion by Justin, second by Randy, approve the amendment. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resilience abatement, junk, junk vehicle, another abatement survey.
This is just the one time every year that I put this on the agenda to bring you guys' attention to it. Do you wanna do any kind of, have you done a look around town? Do you wanna do any kind of abatement procedure? I personally think things look pretty good, but it's not my decision, it's yours.
I did a drive around, Janelle, while Cindy was busy cleaning out the rain gutters. But I would echo what Nancy said. I didn't see anyone that, unless I just didn't happen to see it, but I didn't see any one place that looked like it needed to be addressed. What do you think, Bertie?
How about the shelf house? I don't know whose it is now or was. That's the one we had you question a little while ago. That's kinda unproperly though, isn't it?
We gotta do a lot of though.
We can't, we can't do anything to clean it up, can we?
Not fully own it.
Yeah.
You demolish it?
We can't do that. We have to own it first.
Well, I tried.
It's a great idea.
Yeah, I thought I might pay for it, second. Drop the tree and burn the tree.
Does stucco burn? Probably would.
Inside will most do. Get the wall hot enough to start inside.
Yeah, that's right.
You drop the tree on there, break the house, and then...
We're being recorded, ladies and gentlemen.
That was Snyder take care of it for you, if he drops it on it.
Any further discussion on the abatement survey? Motion's abatement?
Do you need a motion on that, or just...
No.
Nope, if you're gonna take no action, that's just fine. I will keep, I will keep digging to see what I can find on that hail house to see what we can...
Right.
If I can't find a mortgage company, then I'm probably gonna take it to the city attorney and get advice, because it's becoming a problem and...
As far as keeping the right-of-way on that hail house mode, can, is Jerry allowed to do that?
He did all summer, last year.
Okay.
Then we can just assess after tax too, can't we? There's only charge for that.
We could. We didn't last year, but we should.
Should.
We should.
Makes our case.
Yeah.
What?
You bit your knee?
No.
You have chaos.
I'm just trying to find my position either for this or my hip. I'm not sure which works. Doctor's headed on the question. Okay.
But yeah, what you're saying, I think we should probably assess, start assessing that charge to the taxes as well. Maybe at the end of the season or whatever.
Yep, we'll, we'll keep track of that this year and do that at the end of the season.
Good point.
But it does look better if you do more than having tall grass.
Yeah, keep the right-of-way mode up anyway.
Okay, Bertie?
We'd have to have a motion on that?
No, I'll just bring it to you to approve the assessment. When it's time.
Next.
Okay, consider children playing signage. Are we saying, have the kids sign up when they play?
Where, is this like by the park, or?
No, on Spruce Street.
A warning sign for children playing?
That wasn't Andrew.
Yeah, on...
I'm just clarifying.
When the, when the concrete plant opened up first time this spring, he had new drivers and he hadn't told them they couldn't drive on that street. And there were a couple of days when this happened, and when I got wind of it, I called him right away. And he said, "I talked to the guys yesterday," and I don't know that it regularly occurs now. There may still be a time where they cheat a little, but...
But it was brought up recently? In a drivers' meeting?
Yeah, he brought, a couple of weeks ago, I talked to Jared about it, and he said, "I just had called the guys in and talked to him about it," so...
So did the non-Andrew person bring it up?
Yes, yes, yes. It was just a request, and, you know, it's like, in this town, if you put it on one sign, I mean, we're gonna spend a thousand dollars putting up signs.
Yeah, they're on every street.
Every street they're buying.
And I don't know that one's worse than the other, as long as the trucks travel on the highway rather than...
Is it their yard fenced?
It doesn't matter. All the streets have to have it. You put on one because there's kids everywhere.
I agree.
No, you can't just take single ones.
I got something to say about that. If we're gonna get more, if he can't go down the street, my thing is, no truck can go down, no semi.
I agree.
I agree.
I mean, if we're gonna...
I truck route, you're right.
Did we, did we make a conscious decision that he couldn't go down that street?
But every time he happens to go down there, we get a call on it, every time. And that's if...
Well, they're gunning for him.
I mean, when they do go down there, that's when Stan's got that semi across the highway, so they go that way.
We don't have no signs up saying truck route.
Well, you're saying it's unfair, it's not...
Yeah, that's what I think.
Well, that's pretty much says it already there.
They can drive down if they want.
That is our truck route, is Spruce Street.
It's designated that way.
Yeah.
But they, but Jerry said he would do that to help, to help.
Yeah, we asked Jared specifically to keep some of the traffic off of that.
Those that are complaining should probably be told, you're gonna have trucks. You can have grain semis. Is that gonna be an issue?
Yeah, but it's not a constant, everyday thing, Justin. It wasn't Andrew that did it.
Well, no, no, I agree.
But it's not a constant thing when you have a truck route. But this is day in and day out in the summertime.
I, but I'm just saying, the occasional truck, they can't complain about. They're just gonna have to live with it. If there starts to be...
Yeah, because it is a truck route, yeah.
Yeah, fifteen trucks a day going down it because this road's blocked, well, then we have to deal with why that road's blocked.
And kudos to Jared for doing it.
He was trying.
Kudos to him, and I, I think that's great, but, but the other people need to understand that that's the volunteer, that that's not an ordinance, and that, yeah, occasionally, we'll get other trucks, grain trucks and that sort of thing, but Jared...
I haven't been blown by my house. I don't even know who they are, but they, they come around that block, and I don't know how come.
That's the only time I ever seen go down there is when Stan's got that semi across that highway. Across that street, and then go down that road.
But you're right, Jerry, we can't say that trucks can't go down.
Well, and if we have, if we think we have a speed issue, then we need to address that with the sheriff's office to deal with the speed issue.
They go really slow.
I don't, yeah, I don't ever see it, so...
That's one thing I do notice, they go really slow when they're going down the street.
Okay.
I noticed today that at the feed center, there was a semi blocking the road, and there was also a semi trying to get to Moore's, and he just sat there and patiently waited until the feed center was done.
Yeah, and it'll be tough for...
Had a bit of time pass. I mean, I would say a good fifteen, twenty minutes passed, but that semi patiently sat there and waited.
That's pretty good of him.
Yeah.
And it'll get worse in the fall when there's the tractor and the elevator sitting on the road to him, it's gonna really become a problem.
Right, right. So, yeah, and I noticed that today being homesick.
It's a lot you notice when you're in town.
Yeah.
Did you notice Jane Bardo trying to crawl into Richard Vanderhuyten's second story?
Um, that was two days ago, Jane.
Yes, don't respond.
Maybe if you wanna put something in the paper about that, that that is a truck route, but that Jared is volunteer. Just stay off of that.
It's a newsletter. And try to explain it in a newsletter.
Okay.
You think that'd be okay?
Kudos to Jared for that he's trying, yep. Well, he only has control over his trucks, so... Yep, okay.
Okay.
Okay, we're done resigning kids?
That's what it sounds like.
Yeah, we need to approve the street closing.
Yep.
The family has, has sold Myrna Elma Green's house, and there's an auction on May thirty-first, and the family has asked to close Walnut Street from third to fourth for that sale. And it'll last the duration of when they have to put stuff out and then completion of the sale.
So they wanted to close thirty and thirty-one? You said the day before?
No, no, just on the thirty-first.
Oh, just on the thirty-first.
Yeah. They'll probably start putting stuff out around eight in the morning, and it'll all be over by, I don't know what time we're starting, so...
Close Walnut Street, just from third and fourth.
Right.
That's funny. Oh, I'd like that.
Make a motion to reopen it. It's like an alley anyway.
Okay, then, yeah.
Randy made the motion and Justin seconded it.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Purchase of stove. Of where?
The basement. There, there were two stoves down there. One belonged to sixty-plus. When they moved to the fire station, they abandoned their non-working stove, and it went in the recycling truck last week. So...
You're not using the basement for anything, no, why would you use it?
Actually, we're renting it out. People are using it.
They have one stove down there. It's just the way they built it.
And now the cabinets, there's cabinet, stove, cabinet, emptied hole, cabinet. So... It's up to you guys. Well, the, the fact is, though, we had a family down there last Christmas. It was some of your family.
No, it wasn't.
The other side of your family. Well, I thought you called Josh your family, and he was there, but anyway... No, but they were trying to cook their Christmas dinner, and the new stove went out. The other one didn't work. I don't know. It, for three or four hundred dollars, do you wanna leave a hole with a garbage can in it, or do you wanna put a stove down there that people can use? It's up to you.
Well, looking around the building, we need to have a stove.
There is one down there.
There's one, but there were two, and that's, I think there could be times when both would be used. I think last Christmas was one of those. They were intending to use both and then add a half a one.
Are they electric stove?
Yes. So it's up to you. I don't...
Do you have any rentals yet for that space?
Um, not, yes, we do. We have one in July. I mean, we don't rent it as much as the park, okay, but...
Right.
What about for the end of the year?
Usually, it's rented for Thanksgiving, it's rented for Christmas, it's rented for New Year's. I mean...
Available or roasted or red?
No, they all went to the fire station. All the working ones left here and went to the fire station.
Don't pick that scare.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I left that alone, so...
Well, you said the old folks took the stove with them. Maybe we should have the old folks bring the stove back.
They didn't take one?
No, they didn't take one.
So Nancy, do you think you can, you think you can get a replacement, a new stove, a new electric stove?
For under four hundred dollars, yeah.
It's not that much money.
It's just a very standard, cheap stove, but if it works, that's all we need. And that's what we paid for the other one, was about three hundred and fifty dollars.
That's ten rentals.
Yep, yep.
That's the last ten years where they're gonna use a second stove. To pay those ten rentals, one a year. I don't see a purpose for it. Once...
Walk down there and look at it, guys. When you go look at the hole, it just looks...
Because when I cook supper, I only have one in my house. I make it hurt.
Yeah, but you don't have fifty people there.
Sometimes. We have.
If we're gonna treat a light, we put a hole in it, because the garbage can underneath there.
Oh, yeah, that'll look good too.
Paint it white.
He'll make, he'll make it look good. I got faith in him.
Can we get rid of the dishwasher that wasn't working?
Yeah.
So we have that hole also?
No, that was under the counter.
But there's a hole under the counter?
Yeah, there's a hole under the counter. That's where the garbage can is. That's where it is.
Well... What about the, what about the rent that was increased thanks to Janelle, that the senior citizens are paying? Can some of that money be diverted to buy a stove?
That's where, it's going into that pot right now anyway, so... And they did pay the increase, so...
They told me, Judy said they pay, now pay a hundred dollars a month, right?
And we've seen the electric build fire station. Or the one here go down, and that one, I think we'll see go up, but, yeah.
People by Labor Day, we should have enough money for a new stove then.
Yeah.
About fifteen dollars, ain't it? Or a little more.
Okay, you need a motion to do something.
Janelle, what do you think?
Well, I don't know. I don't, do we have to buy a brand-new one? Can't only find a used one for a hundred bucks?
Then you're buying somebody else's junk. I'm gonna buy it here next year, doing the same thing.
You're buying somebody else's junk.
Well, for three hundred and fifty dollars, I don't think it's such a bad move.
I don't either.
We could waste that for the green electricity, I'd say, I have electric stove.
That probably goes with the house.
That's not a bad idea. Yeah, no, it probably does.
What color is it, Justin?
White.
It is white?
Was it white?
Yeah, I think. White or black? Is there gas up there?
I don't remember.
Ain't that gas up there?
I need to look at it, that color.
She thinks it's beige.
I don't know if the color mattered on the basement stove?
Yeah, they need to match.
Yeah, but we need white.
Oh, come on, that's just a man talking.
Guys, we just spent all this money making our facility nice. Are we really gonna...
Paint it.
Jerry has a spray paint can.
Spray my hammer.
I, I don't know, and you know, the problem is, is that it's, while it's rented out, it's not highly used or used frequently. And four hundred dollars is probably what you'll end up paying. I mean, you know, honestly, realistically. You know, if we can get by with one for a while, maybe we could put the word out.
Why don't we just wait and see and see what they, if they complain?
Yeah, if it's an issue.
If it's an issue, it's fall. If it is, then we'll run another one. What do you think, Janelle?
Thrive it grant, or something like that.
Well, yeah, there's always grant money out there, but isn't Thrive it more of a matching fund?
Yes, yeah, that's true.
So, but I don't mind putting it off. I mean, if people complain about it, then, then we can do it.
Let's do it. When you can defer all...
postpone the...
Yeah, let's just wait and see what people, what people say.
Okay. Okay, the current stove we put on, oh, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, pop it for him, Dick.
No, I don't know nothing.
Oh, you're visiting?
Yep.
Okay, good enough.
Just sitting in.
And you don't have any messages from anybody in particular?
Nope.
Don't, don't stir anything up.
Just come to visit.
Okay.
Nice rainy day, I got time. Might come to that point where you won't see me in town until midnight or leaving the dark to home in the dark.
Okay, discussion items and report, public works.
Nothing.
None.
Are you done with soccer?
I never was.
What?
Never had nothing to do with soccer.
Oh, the ball fields, I'm asking.
There's one more game left.
Yeah, there's this weekend, yeah. If it don't rain, cancel it or whatever.
Now, is there any way that they have head counts? I, I'm just, I, I am just totally impressed with how many people they get up there.
Yes.
Do they do any kind of head count at all, I mean?
No.
Gosh, darn.
The lot of cards are Saturday.
Oh, my God. It was amazing, okay.
That's the way it's been for, I mean, ever since we started the program.
Yeah, well, it's impressive, it really is, so kudos to you and others who are doing it.
Yeah, it is a good program.
So public works, nothing?
Nothing yet.
You be working on the alleys?
I'll be working on the grass.
You don't like weeds, do you?
One of the day, one of these days, it'll be time to mow.
He's been mowing. One of these days, I gotta mow mine.
Okay, city clerk?
We have a problem with rose bushes that got killed.
How about we forget the stove purchase and buy roses? We're already got stove purchase.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But tell, tell us though, what you're, what you think.
What I'm, what I'm thinking is, I have to make a trip to Ames on Thursday for Litten. And I have bought, we have bought the replacement few that we've here and the ones that I've bought, I've been able to get the knockout roses at Lowe's in Ames for thirteen to eighteen dollars a piece. And I haven't counted, I was gonna do it today, but it rained all day. Laura and I are probably going to do this tomorrow, but if there's six times four. There could be as many as forty that need to be replaced.
Oh.
Yeah.
Forty, do we need roses?
Yes.
Why do we need roses? Less than eighty dollars.
Why do we need roses? Because that ruins all of our work that we've done.
Can you put other flowers in there that get some?
Not that take as little work as those do.
There's no work.
And there's some that are coming back.
What about, what about going through like Flossin and just, uh, Enchanted Gardens and just see what he would bid you?
Well, I would do that and I would call Lowe's and try to get a better price if I thought I was going to get that many.
So what you're looking at maybe doing, how many?
Maybe as many as forty, we're gonna count tomorrow if it's not raining.
Why did?
Pardon?
Do we know why they died?
I think it was too cold this winter and they were too dry last fall. No rainin', and mine at home, I've got about two out of ten that have come back at home too.
Even, yeah.
Yeah, mine at home aren't growing either and.
You're looking at five hundred, seven hundred dollars on rose purchases.
You sure they're all dead, I mean, there ain't nothing coming on any of them?
Nobody's got nothing coming on.
There's a few, but not very many, and like I said, we're gonna go out and look at every one and make sure that there's not life coming and I.
No fertilizer you can give them?
Not if they're not coming back.
We always hear that one, what's his name, Earl Mays, the one's got different things.
You can, you can give it an acid friendly wa, it's a wash, it's something you spray on there. But, yeah, I think they've been there probably forty years, those bushes, and this is the first year they turn brown. What about, could we do it in segments? Could we authorize you to get twenty-five this year?
It's not ruined from looks of it, but bring it, they're not all out.
I know, but.
And it wasn't you guys on the council, okay? But when this was done, council made a commitment to, to this project and to keep it nice. And I know this is an issue that happened and it's not any, it's not under anybody's control. I don't want you guys to be the, I mean, I took, and I would love to show you a PowerPoint if we have time before we go, of the work that we've done in this community and the striking, it's very striking what we've accomplished in town. And I really hate to let it go because we had too much winter. I mean, these have been there, they, they should have made it another winter, but I think last year's drought and this year's cold.
I think we had no ground cover either.
Yeah, we didn't have any snow.
They said it was between the wind and the cold.
I think we're lucky that some of the stuff that's come back did come back, so, I, you know, I don't know, but I, I would, if you've got time to stay, I'd love to show you the PowerPoint I put together to, for the Keep Iowa Beautiful Conference because it is really striking where we've come.
It surprises you what you forget.
Well, I think all the compliments that we get throughout the summer, we're driving through here, is well worth keeping it looking pretty. Because there are a lot of compliments that we get from.
I know.
Fire.
And there is no doubt, I mean, people are very impressed, but that comes with a price tag and.
Of course it does.
And if we're.
But I can't understand why one of these greenhouses wouldn't give us some sort of a discount when we're buying that many bushes.
Yeah, I, I think so too.
So I think it's worth Nancy looking, checking around and.
I do too. Oh, yes, I thought she was asking for authorization.
I think, well, she probably is, since she's going on Thursday, she probably is looking for some sort of a budget.
But what I would do is check every place I could check before I went to make sure I was getting the best price we could get. I, I'm not, I'm not trying to go out and spend your money.
No, I know you're. Hey, just think about it this way, the volunteer hours that Kay and I put in should help pay for it.
Right.
Well, and.
I'll help too.
Oh, sorry, Jerry.
Yeah.
I keep, I went on and on about Kay.
Back to volunteers and volunteer.
Oh, I know, but it's not benefit to me, it's not benefit to me, Randy.
No, I'm just saying.
Well, and that's not what she's asking.
I like the looks of it and I love the compliments that we get, well, even when you go to Litten, people talk.
It looks nice.
Yeah, and even Lake City, and what do you think people would say, Dick?
I mean, we spend all that money on mulch, why can't we spend all that money on flowers too? I mean, why can't we give Nancy a five hundred dollar? I mean, it's for our community, to keep our community beautiful.
I'll make one comment.
What?
If, if you don't spend the money and keep it up. Remember the city park, how that worked after it was first built, we had the landscaping around it, what is it now? It's cement, so it's either, either gotta spend the money and maintain it, or it's gonna end up with concrete intersections back to where it was.
Yep.
We gotta keep it up.
So it's one or the other.
And then Ryman gives the money, I think we need to keep it up to honor him too.
Yeah, that's a respect thing.
Yeah.
The other thing you need to think about, and it's not a direct, it, it doesn't just exactly come back directly, but if you think about all the development that's occurred since we did this project. That building over there, that ugly eyesore's gone, this ugly eyesore is now a store that does business and contributes sales tax. And this, we've got a new building over here, we've got new buildings down in the south, we've got more remodeling going on in some of these other buildings. All of that was spurred by the work done to beautify this community.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, we're, we're actually a fortunate town with two schools being used as a business.
Absolutely.
And, and at home, you go a lot of towns, or what is it, Axira's gonna burn down their old school?
They did, yeah.
No, I don't think they got it done yet.
Yeah, they did.
Yeah, they did, two, uh, two weekends ago.
No, they, they couldn't because it was too windy.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it was canceled, I think, yeah, they, you know.
It was scheduled.
It was scheduled for that, but they couldn't do it because it was too windy, and then there's, you know, if you drive around these different, I get around in the cement truck and there's a lot of schools sitting that look really bad because they're, you know, and they're not on tax rules or, you know, we're lucky for that.
There's one of those in Litten.
Well, yeah, Litten's, for example, one of them, but that's still, that's actually being used.
Okay, Nancy, can you then, next month, report out on how many we replaced?
Yes.
For what amount, if we give you a budget?
I can do that with an email when we get it done.
Okay.
Yes. No, I, I don't wanna, I'm not trying to push anything past you, this is just a, a seasonal need and it needs to be taken care of and.
And, um, speaking of that, will you please mail out, Randy, any, a copy of the email that goes to us? Is the postage really that big an issue to get it to Randy?
No.
Just so that he's, okay. All right, that and the agenda.
He's always, Randy's always told me he didn't want it, he didn't care, so that's why I don't do it.
He, he needs to have it, so, okay. I'll make a motion that we give Nancy.
Please don't make a motion because this wasn't agendized, this is, you have to kind of trust me.
I guess it wasn't.
Under discussion to.
Can we at least have a verbal agreement that five hundred dollars is the max? And we're hoping that that will be your best negotiation.
If that doesn't do it, we will, if that doesn't do it, we will put it on the agenda for next month and replace the last few.
Are you okay with that, Janelle, and if she reports out in an email, sends a copy to Randy, great. You make a good point, Dick.
Well.
Really you do.
I'm sorry, but that's, you know, I seen it happen at the Schmidt up at the shelter house. You know, I mean.
Okay, Verdi, you're on.
Okay, sack on the solid waste board, no report there. Sheriff's Department, that's her.
I, I put that trap out there for you, I'm sorry. There really, there really is no report because I was in Storm Lake last, or last month, so I did not go last month.
Well, I got a letter from somebody saying that Jane Barto has asked Verdi to be replaced. Or replacing Verdi, or replacing Jane.
What?
Joey, now he's just kidding back.
I'll write that letter next time.
I did not attend, so I do not have a report out.
Okay.
I think that's what I said, but that's all right.
Okay. Sheriff's Department, I'm starting to read.
Yeah, are you gonna reverse it here?
I didn't, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor and council, I attended one meeting at Sack City, I believe, and then Nancy probably went to one in Odogov here.
Yeah, I went to the league meeting last week.
Those are the county meetings, nothing spectacular happened at the, the one I went to.
Yeah, nothing spec. Well, we listened to, um, the county assessor discuss the changes in the taxes, property tax structure with the new law change, but for me, it wasn't anything new because I already had class on that, but.
Is there any way you can put a thank you in the newsletter for Sack or use of the trailer, is that permissible?
Sure.
For what, Cindy?
The, the dump trailer that I used to use for cleanup, Sack Brownsey's. Volunteered it.
Well, how about a thank you to Kay, Cindy and Jerry?
We don't need a thank you.
Yes, you do. It's amazing.
And great?
No, I don't think so.
The only other thing I have is, some years ago, we discussed it in last night's storm events, brought it back to my mind, um, is looking into this tornado siren to be set off by Sack. By the comm center, trying to find some way to make that work so our guys don't have to go up there in that bad weather to set it off.
But aren't you guys out scouting anyway?
We no longer go out.
Oh, really?
No, we have enough people outside of town to take care of it, our guys.
We can go with our own vehicles if we want.
Yeah, but fire trucks stay parked, we don't.
You take your own vehicles, some just do as they use. And we don't want much.
What's the fix, what's?
Well, basically, it's gonna need a new control, more or less, that, uh, Sack Con can call a number, set it off, and then we'll have to manually reset it. I think was the only way I found to make it work.
So the city needs to buy this equipment, is what you're saying?
And have it put in.
How much?
You should see.
I don't know, yeah, we have to. Get estimates, I think we need.
If we have to. It's not, we can't do it.
Right, but it should not, see, Lake City, I mean, Lake Cities haven't set up that way. Yeah, but their comm center can set theirs off, Lakeview is, Wallack is, Sack City is, everybody, pretty much everybody in our county is except for us. I don't know if Nema Hall is or Early, I, I don't know. Yeah, and I, I just don't think that we need to ask our guys to run up there when a tornado's coming to hit that switch, I think that should be a comm center.
Refresh my memory, Justin, cause I'm remembering that the last time we had this issue, that technology was not available to us at that point. Right?
Our sirens need updated in order to do it.
So the.
It's not the controls, it's the sirens.
I believe it might be this, yeah.
Okay.
I can't remember now exactly what it was.
I can't either.
Oh.
But I know there's ways that we could set up a phone system with a, uh, basically off of just what we have in the building already to set it off.
Who can we get to evaluate that syst, to evaluate what we have and what we need?
I could, but, I mean, cause basically it'd be a series of, uh, some security systems that you could install to do that. But as far as who everybody else uses, I don't know.
You have time to do the research?
I probably could, yeah. I can figure something out.
So sirens and, you're like, no, right?
I have a question.
Yeah?
Justin.
Yep.
Um, is there any way that they can page you guys?
Well, they do pages.
Okay, they page you, so then can you go to the fire station and set off, um, like the new whistle? Is that our, is that supposed to be our way of knowing there's a tornado?
Yes, yeah, that's the only way currently that it's set up, they would have to page us, we would have to, or if we have storm spotters out, um, they would radio back to somebody to go hit the switch and then run like hell for cover.
Well, it has to be done manually, and you're thinking there should be a way to get it done?
Everybody else has automatic.
Automatic?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we should have something along those lines, so, I mean, that building is not safe to be in if a tornado comes.
Yeah, no, there's no storm shelter in that town.
So by consensus, can we just?